December 1st, Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. And it is 5:36 PM. This meeting will be conducted entirely via electronic means on November 5th, 2020 in accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074. The council chair, George Handley, determined that conducting meetings of the municipal council with an anchor location such as the municipal council chamber presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. These are the facts upon which I made this determination. The World Health Organization has classified novel coronavirus disease, AKA COVID-19, as a pandemic. The U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention state that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another. The state of Utah is currently subject to a public health emergency order which limits the size of public gatherings and which requires people to wear face coverings and follow social distancing guidelines. Utah County is currently listed as having a high level of coronavirus transmission and physical distancing measures will be difficult to set up and maintain in the Provo City Municipal Council Chamber and other meeting rooms. Additionally, the Chair of the Governing Board of the Redevelopment Agency of Provo City has determined that its meetings are subject to the same risks and has adopted the same procedures as the municipal council. The meeting will be available to the public for live broadcast and on-demand viewing at I will note that there appear to be some technical difficulties in accessing the agenda. For tonight, if you're having difficulty, you can either try a different server or you could go to utah.gov/pmn and find our agendas there or at HTTPS colon double blacks backslash documents.provo.org and click on agendas. Sorry, I said server when I meant browser. So hopefully that is helpful to you. The council requests that attendees help maintain the decorum of the meeting by silencing electronic devices and being respectful to others and to wait to speak until called on by the council chair. In the current situation where this meeting is being held via Zoom webinar and broadcast over YouTube, I remind you to turn off your mics when not speaking so as to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded, and broadcast for all to hear. I will state the names of those present as well as those excused from this meeting. I am joined by, I'm George Handley, the Chair. I'm joined by my fellow counselors, Dave Harding, Vice Chair, Dave Sewell, Dave Shipley, Travis Hoben, Shannon Ellsworth, and we believe we will be joined later by Bill Fillmore. We're also joined by Cliff Stracken, our Executive Director, Brian Jones, our Council Attorney, Mayor Michelle Cuffusi, Wayne Parker, our Chief Administrative Officer, and we are supported by staff who are assisting us as well. So we will have an opening prayer offered by Shannon Ellsworth, after which we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance that will be provided by Travis Hoben.
Dear kind Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to meet together and to counsel and make important decisions for our community. We're grateful for the people who have prepared for this meeting, who have brought the best available information to this meeting, and we pray that thou bless us with thy Spirit to see those who aren't always seen in Provo and that we can include them in our conversations, include them in our decisions, and make sure that we're serving everyone in our city. We're thankful for our police department and our fire department and all the first responders who serve our city. Please bless them and their families and help us to increase in love and civility and respect and neighborliness in our community. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hoben and Ms. Ellsworth. Okay, there, I'll turn the time over to Cliff Stracken, who will explain how public comment will work.
There are three types of items for which public comment will be received. The first is the open public comment period. The council will allow up to 15 minutes for public comments on matters that do not appear on tonight's agenda. The second is for those items that require a public hearing. For these items, time will be provided for all those who wish to speak. The third is for items on the agenda that do not require a public hearing. The council will allow up to 15 minutes for comments on each item. Because the city council is meeting virtually using Zoom webinar, and this meeting is being broadcast on both the Provo City Council's YouTube channel and on Facebook, we have enabled telephone access to receive public comment, the numbers for which will be shown on screen during the meeting. Callers may have to try multiple numbers to get connected. When a caller is connected, they will be required to enter the meeting ID and enter the pound symbol. When asked for a personal ID number, enter pound. The caller will now enter the meeting as an attendee and will be able to hear the meeting while muted. If a caller wishes to speak on the item being discussed, they can press star nine to indicate their desire to comment and then wait to be called upon. When you are called upon, press star six to unmute yourself. Do it only once. The caller will be called upon by the last four digits of the listed phone number unless you've given us your name. Please provide your name and city of residence before making your comments. Each caller will be given up the two minutes to speak. A timer will be posted on screen, and a beep should be audible to the caller when their time is up. A reminder that there is a lag of approximately 30 to 60 seconds between the meeting and the broadcast. To avoid confusion, callers should mute the broadcast to hear the discussion in real time. Before the comment period starts, last time we met, there were some that had technical difficulties. If you find yourself having technical difficulties, send us a quick email at council@provo.org, and then we can work with you to try and get you up and available. We watch that constantly. The open public comment period starts now.
Thank you, Mr. Stracken. So we'll take comments from the public on any item that is not on the agenda tonight. And we'll wait 30 seconds or so. Oh, we already have a caller. Caller whose number ends in 0899, go ahead. You want to press star six to unmute yourself.
Chair Handley, I believe if they press star six too early, they need to give it like five or seven seconds before they do that.
Looks like they're ready.
Is it, is it on?
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Chantel Wood. I've lived in Provo for a few years. I just wanted to state my support for ranked choice voting. I believe the council had a meeting with Mr. Stan Lockhart earlier in the year about it, but I just wanted to say as a resident of Provo that I would support that and love if that was adopted in Provo for this coming year. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, if there are any other callers from the public, want to press star nine so that we know you're trying to get in. Wait just a minute. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council to begin our agenda for the evening. We'll start with our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial, dealing mainly with the administration of council business. If there, is there any council member who would like to remove an item from the council agenda for further discussion? Okay, seeing no objection, then there is an implied motion on a resolution adopting the 2021 council regular meeting schedule. And that is the only item on the consent agenda this evening. So I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I will vote yes, Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Philmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Shipley?
Yes.
Excellent, okay, thank you. We will then turn to our action agenda. We have an implied motion on, this is item number two, a resolution supporting the preservation of Bridalvale Falls for natural scenic and recreational purposes, and I will introduce the item. We discussed this earlier in our work session, but it has become apparent in the, in the public due to an upcoming meeting that the county commissioners called for next week, that there is a consideration for conservation easement to be placed on the county property that is at Bridalvale Falls. And this is in response to a potential private development that is also being contemplated for that area. And because this is an area of great value to our community, because we are a city that is adjacent to Bridalvale Falls and actually own and manage property that takes the public to Bridalvale Falls on the Parkway Trail. We felt that it was necessary for us to express a united voice of support for the idea of a conservation easement at this location to protect it for natural and recreational purposes in perpetuity. We think that, you know, privatizing it and thereby limiting public access and potentially causing some disruptions to the natural effects of the location and the aesthetic appreciation and value that it has in our community. We were concerned enough that we felt that we wanted to issue a resolution and actually also write a letter to the county commission to let them know our feelings about this. So we have discussed this and felt in agreement that, that we wanted to vote on a resolution this evening. So I think that's probably enough to be said at this point unless there's, is there any other points of discussion or questions, I guess, for me in presenting this item? Otherwise, I'll call for a comment from the public. So we'll give it some time, but if you have a desire to speak to this item, now is the time. You can call in and, and press star nine. And we'll wait here for just a moment. I will note while we're waiting that we have received already a number of emails about this item as well, and we're always attentive and grateful for feedback that comes via email as well. Okay, I'll see no public comment on this item. I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Harding?
Thank you. There's just, there's so much that we don't know. You know, I think we are all in agreeance that this area needs to be preserved. But there's, without doing all the study in that, I, I'm a bit hesitant to call on the commission to, to create a conservation easement. All of those details about, you know, who would hold the easement and what would that entail? It makes me a little uneasy calling on them to create an easement. I think I prefer encouraging them to preserve it and encouraging them to consider an easement and then kind of deferring to, to their study. But I honestly, I'm not certain how much difference those two things will really matter to the commission who actually makes the decision. So, you know, I'm not gonna, my preference would be to call on them to preserve it and call on them to consider an easement, but not to actually call, you know, call on them to create the easement. But again, I don't feel too strongly about that.
Hey, is there any other concern or comment, Mr. Fillmore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to go on record as saying that I am wholeheartedly in support of the resolution we contemplate sending to the county commission. Readily acknowledged that we don't have a vote on this matter, but I do believe that under the circumstances and all that I've been able to learn about what's, what's contemplated, I think that a conservation easement is absolutely the best way to go. It preserves our most valued and pristine sites in all of Utah, Cali, all of the state of Utah forever. And I think that if we did an instantaneous poll of our citizens, we'd have overwhelming support for that.
Thank you, Philmore, Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Fillmore. I wholeheartedly support this resolution professionally. I am an environmental planner. I write environmental policy. In 2016 and 2017, I was the consultant who wrote Utah County's Resource Management Plan that addresses natural resources. And I think that this kind of conservation and preservation of a recreational space is in line with the policies that they themselves outlined in their own documents in 2016 and 2017. So I, I'm really excited about this, and I'm excited that the, that the county could in perpetuity preserve a special place for all of Utah County.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion on this item? Mr. Sewell?
I kind of wanted to echo Mr. Fillmore's comment that if it were possible for us to do a poll, I, I also believe there would be overwhelming support for preserv- preservation of this natural treasure, even though the public is just barely beginning to find out about the possibility of this being sold to a private developer. We're already getting many, many expressions of support for preservation, and I haven't seen one message yet saying that what we should do is sell that off for private development.
Well, there's no other comment than this is an implied motion. So am I, or no, am I right on that? Yes, it is an implied motion. Further discussion or motion, call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with you, Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that voting is unanimous. All right, thank you very much. Thank you to the staff for helping us to prepare the motion on. We'll turn to item number three, an implied motion on ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding permitted uses in the neighborhood shopping center SC1, community shopping center SC2, and regional shopping center SC3 zones and related provision that has citywide application. And Gavin Weaver will be our presenter.
Thank you. If you can go to the next slide, please. See, they're John, Karen, whoever's, thank you. Staff went through each of our shopping center zones and looked at, analyzed each permitted land use, either whether they are permitted or by conditional right, and analyzed whether they needed to remain as a conditional use or if it could shift these two permitted uses. Staff went through each one and moved a majority of them to permitted land uses. If the land use is to remain as a conditional land use, then there would be conditions that were either already codified or having codified or drafted, sorry, conditions were drafted for those if they are remaining there. Primarily, most of the land uses are already allowed in the zone. We did not introduce too many new uses. I can go through a few of those. Next slide, please. So we added general merchandise into the zones. We added the department stores and drive-through stores as a permitted land use in the SC1 zone, and general merchandise as a broad category within the SC2 and 3 currently is a permitted use. That's not changing. Next slide. Proposing to add in the land use for food, 5,400, into all SC zones as a permitted land use. Next slide. Adding in the land use of miscellaneous retail trade into Adding in the land use of miscellaneous retail trade into all SC zones except for liquor and packaging and fuel and ice within all SC zones. Next slide. Adding in the land use of cultural activities and nature exhibits in the SC3 zone. Currently, we have quite a few land uses that have conditions that are already codified. Seven of those have been codified and we are adding in some more conditions for those that have not been. We're also creating a subsection within our supplementary development standards that's going to be titled Standards for Conditional Uses. So that way the public and staff can locate condition uses in a more centralized location. Next page. Currently, the ones that have codes listed are already codified. We are adding some new conditions for surplus store. Next slide, please. And for fraternal association of lodges and restaurants with drive-through service. Next slide, please. You can keep going. We've gone through these conditions. If you'd like me to go through them again, I'm happy to. Next, please. Next. Currently, within our zoning code, we amended all of these zones to have under conditional uses so it would add in the language saying, and the standards of subsection 1434250, which would be the new conditional, standards for conditional uses. And next slide. And this is just to clarify that a SC1 zone, about area, the area of the zone can be up to five acres, which is a discrepancy within our code for this. Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Any questions? All right, we'll open this up for public comment. Or less. All right, we'll bring it back to the council for seeing no public comment. Any discussion from the council on this item? Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to voice my appreciation again for the hard work that has gone into this. It's kind of a restructuring and really improves our approach to conditional uses and I think make them much more coherent. So I appreciate the work that went into this.
Any other comments or questions, discussion from the council? All right, if not, then I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hoben.
Yes.
Sewell.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Harding.
Yes.
All right, thank you. The voting is unanimous. Okay, we'll move on then to item number four. It's an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code to enact the open space preservation and recreation zone OSPR. And this has citywide application and this will be presented again by Mr. Gavin Weaver.
Can you read in item four as well? Item?
Yes. Item five is an implied motion on an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 1,291 acres of real property located within the boundaries of Provo City from various zone classifications to open space preservation and recreation OSPR. So citywide impact as well.
Thank you. The proposed ordinance amendment is to preserve our parks, open space, park, recreation, and natural areas within the city. Staff worked very closely with our Parks and Recreation Department and our city embossment in drafting this zone and also providing with a list of parcels to be rezoned to this new OSPR zone. In a lot of cities, their open space zone is common, good practice in preserving our parks and recreational areas. Next slide. Currently, a good majority of our parks are zone, public facility zone, which have these permitted uses that would be allowed there to go in there. The open space zone would allow cemeteries, city-owned community gardens, conservation grounds, golf courses, parks, recreational fields, recreational uses, trails and trailheads, and wetlands to be there. General plan encourages having ordinances that would protect plant life and habitats and also encourages preserving parks within our neighborhoods. Adoption of the zone and the rezone of the proposed parcels would be furthering the policies within the general plan. This is the text of the zone. There's not a lot of text for it. But it was drafted collaboratively with our Parks Department. Next slide, please. And here is just where we're adding in the requirements for landscaping and signs if they are within the OSPR zone. Next slide. And keep going. Right, thank you. We have 104 parcels that are proposed to be rezoned, 68 of those are parks, eight trailheads, nine cemetery, nine greenways, six nature preserves, three recreational ranges, recreation range, three golf courses. All of the parcels are publicly owned. 103 of them are owned by Provo City. One parcel is owned by the US government. Notification was sent to the US government for this. And all properties that are proposed to be rezoned would be conforming to the new OSPR zone. I'm happy to go through each property on the map if you wish. I'll leave that up to you. Is there any questions for staff?
Thank you. Any questions from the council from Mr. Weaver before we open it up for public comment? Okay, we'll turn to public comment then. Falling on these numbers and press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. I'll just start by saying that I very much support both the creation of the new zone and the application that has been proposed. I think this is a wonderful way to communicate to the community, to potential developers, to councils and future generations what the intention is for these pieces of property so that they're less vulnerable to possible change and development when I think in the past they have been. And I mean, I don't think it's obviously as aggressive as a conservation easement, but I think this will provide, again, sort of consistent and strong signaling about our, what we value about these, about these areas and what we intend for them going forward. And we've had, just to provide a little bit of background to the rest of the council, we've had a fair amount of discussion about these two items in our foothills committee meetings with Gary McGinn and other staff members, Scott Henderson and Doug Robbins to help us sort of understand the desirability of this zone and its logic behind this application to these pieces of property. And so I think, I think this is really, really good, good legislation and I just would encourage the council to consider passing both of these tonight. Any other comments from the, or discussion from the council? All right, seeing none, this is, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hoben.
Hey, thanks. Sorry for the delay. I guess I'm a little curious, what's the potential downside? Doesn't seem like there's much downside, but I'd be curious to hear from, from staff what they think the potential downside might be of doing this? If there is any.
I think the downside is that it leaves these areas in the city to be, to be changed from a park to other uses within the PF zone. And that doesn't, and if that's a permitted land use, it would have to go through a public process to have a hearing for it because it would already be allowed by the right. And so by changing it to a park, if things were to change later on, that has that kind of built in to it.
Yeah, I think, again, in our discussions on the foothills committee, I think, you know, we didn't, we didn't really contemplate and maybe Mr. Sewell or Mr. Fillmore might have any, something to add to this. I don't recall any serious potential negatives to this at all. The only thing that it did seem to me to, when addressed, was, well, a future council, of course, like all zoning, can always decide to change zones. So it's not, it's not as strong as a conservation easement might be, for example, in guaranteeing that areas under this zone would remain open and undeveloped in perpetuity. That's, that's, it may still be desirable for us to contemplate such action on certain parcels in the city at a later point. So this doesn't preclude that possibility, but it does, it's essentially, as I understood it, essentially the same thing as if we were to put our own conservation easement on a property that can be undone by a future council. A third-party conservation easement can't. But, so this, this all could be undone by a future council, but the idea is that it sends a strong signal and it sets a precedent and I think it communicates better our intentions. We'll run into fewer conflicts and problems down the road with, you know, anybody who might misinterpret what our intentions are. Though it seemed to me, you know, pretty much a no-brainer when it, when it was presented to us initially. I don't know if anyone else wants to add to that, but.
We discussed conservation easement slightly and Tara can add in if she would like to, but the direction was to go for this avenue of a zone over it rather than a conservation easement.
Mr. Sewell.
I think most of these properties that we're proposing to rezone to the open space zone are currently zone public facilities. So if, and a few others, but if you compare those two, I think this is a more narrowly tailored zone. Public facilities allows a lot more permitted uses for things that we probably wouldn't want in most of these areas. So I don't really see a downside to, to making this move.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion, then I will do, we'll do, we'll need to do two separate votes. We'll do a vote on item number four, which is the enactment of the zone. And I'll call for a vote on that, starting with Mr. Fillmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hoben.
Yes.
Sewell.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Or, sorry, Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ellsworth.
Yes.
And that voting is unanimous. And then I will vote for, call for a vote on item number five, which is the application of this new zone to the 1,291 acres that have been outlined in the agenda. And I'll start with Mr. Hoben.
Yes.
Mr. Sewell.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore.
Yes.
All right. Voting was unanimous on both of those. Thank you very much. Thank you to the staff for working so hard on this last several months and we're grateful that we could see that to completion. We'll turn to item number six on our action agenda and implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo general plan, sections 1.2.9 and 1.2.10, related to the key land use policies, north area guiding principles, and urban growth and landings annexation, citywide application presented by Robert Mills Planning.
Thank you, council members. So this application actually is tied very closely to the two applications that you just approved because we are proposing that we amend our annexation policy to reflect the adoption of this new zone and to update our annexation policy map to reflect those things. So just to quickly talk about the text that we are amending in our annexation policy plan, we are talking about what's considered Area 5 and Area 6. Area 5, as you can see on this map, currently is quite small, but we are proposing that that be amended to be increased and to include all lands that are currently not within Provo City limits but are in our annexation plan in the northeast hillside area that are privately held. And the intention is to inform potential applicants that may be wanting to annex into the city that if they do own those properties and they do wish to be annexed into the city that the zoning that they would be assigned upon annexation would be the open space recreation and preservation zone that we just talked about. Additionally, Area 6 is proposed to be amended to only include areas that are publicly held, whether by Pro City, the county, or the federal government. And the intention for those properties is to also be included in the, in the annexation policy as coming into the city as the OSPR zone. We just want to do this preemptively so that anybody that's considering annexation would be aware of our intention and the desire that we have to preserve those hillside areas for those open space and recreation opportunities. John, can you go to the next map? The next slide, please. So this slide just gives a little bit better understanding of what the map amendment would be. So you can see where Area 5 is already and then it would be expanded into Area 6 to include all of those lands that are currently privately held. We took this application to the planning commission. Planning commission recommended approval and also coming to council for your approval. That's all of my presentation, but happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Any questions for Mr. Mills before I open it up for public comment? comment? Mr. Harding?
Yeah, thank you. So I fully understand the idea behind zoning this as open space as soon as it's annexed. I think currently our policy is anything that's annexed in immediately becomes like A120 or something like that, which is kind of the lowest developable space. And then the idea is that if someone wants to develop it, they need to come to the council, they need to present a convincing case on, on why it should be zoned something else. And so now that we have an open space zone, I think it totally makes sense to default to that anytime land is annexed. That's the default. And then, and then a case has to be made. If, if that's what's being proposed tonight, I'm, I'm happy to support that. If what's being proposed is what we're saying, that by, by passing this tonight, where we are trying to send a very clear message to anyone who owns land in here that might in the future be annexed into the city, that the only thing that we'd be in, you know, if, if they're annexed, there's, there's, there's no discussion. It's just, it's open space and that's all we'll ever consider. If that's what we're being asked to do, then that might be the proper policy. But if that's what we're being asked to decide tonight, I, I would want to see it go through a more thorough public process. And I think we're already talking about doing a kind of a northeast Provo master plan and whatnot. I'd like to see, you know, if that's what we're being asked to decide on tonight, I definitely want that to have gone through a more robust process and have a stronger, you know, recommendation from, from, you know, public, you know, and having, have, you know, an open city hall meeting and several open house kind of things. Because to me, that sounds like a, a pretty significant policy decision. And so anyway, so I guess my, my question, sorry, I went too long, but my question is, is are we just saying that this is the initial zoning? Or are we trying to set a policy that any of these lands in five or six, we're, we're saying our policy is, is these will never be developed?
So, thank you, Mr. Harding. The, the intention is that it would, it would send a message that it seems like these lands are best suited for this OSPR zone. But anybody would be able to come to the council through the zone change process and present any ideas or, or proposals that they feel would be a better utilization. And, and the council could consider those proposals, just like they would any other zone change application. But the initial intent is to convey a message that from the outset, it seems like the best zoning and the best use is for open space preservation and recreation uses. But if there is a better thing that they would like to propose, they're always welcome to do that. They have absolutely the right to submit a proposal for that. Then it's, you know, it just goes through the public process and at the council's discretion. Does that make sense?
Yeah, let's turn it to public comment if there's any. Do we have the information about public comment to post? We'll get to a little bit. Anyone wants to call in? Okay, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Any comments or questions from the council on this item? This is the, maybe I'll just make a comment and then ask the question, since this is the first item, or excuse me, the first time this item's been heard. Any council member can request that this item be continued. Mr. Sewell, go ahead. I'll, I'll comment later.
Well, I was just thinking about Councilor Harding's question. And I guess in my mind, I was thinking of this, just the way that he described it as sort of the least intensive zone that we could bring property in at. Like, like he said, we used to use an agricultural zone, but now we have something even less intensive than that. And so, I mean, it does kind of send a signal that it's not a given that we would be open to changing the zone. But since we can't find future councils, I, I never viewed this as trying to send some of, some kind of message far into the future that we wouldn't consider rezone requests.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sewell. I think I'm glad I let you speak first because you put that really well for me. Yeah, I think the idea that I had was that this, this at least prevents, or at least, or discourages the possibility that there's some misunderstandings or mixed signals sent to a developer who might have plans that are based on an assumption that they would be, you know, that this would be something we're looking for. This sort of says, we're not, we're not actively looking for anything other than the open space preservation, unless of course, as Mr. Mills explained, you know, there's, there's a compelling reason to consider either for us or any other future council. So I, I think this is a key component to the, to the overall change that we've already contemplated in terms of creating the zone and, and applying it.
Mr. Hamlin, may I make one more comment? Just to kind of further explain that, one of the other things that, one of the other reasons that we're recommending this change to our annexation policy plan is because the, the open space zone does not have an inherent development right attached to it. Whereas even, even the lower, the most sparsely dense agricultural zone, A120, or even A140, there's still an inherent development right to that zone. And so essentially what we're saying is, you can, you can annex into the city, but there will be no development right associated with your annexation. So that, that can't be an argument for future. Even if, for instance, areas in area five, those might be in the county right now. And there might be some development rights within the county. But if they annex into the city, then they're already forewarned and there's a clear understanding that there is not going to be a development right after annexation.
Ms. Ellsworth, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I was just curious if, and I don't know if there are any homes in those areas that, you know, we're targeting. But if you did want to annex in and you had 10 acres and a home, maybe near Canyon Road, how would this impact your annexation into the Provo city?
So the, the language specifically states that if you're already intending to be residential upon annexation, then you would be annexed in, you know, with some sort of development right that way. But if, if you, if your property is currently on the general plan map as being annexed in as agricultural, instead of being zoned agricultural upon annexation, it would be zoned OSPR.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you. I was just gonna make a comment with regard to this discussion and specifically addressing Mr. Harding's question about what message are we sending? That I think it's important to remember that message or perception of message is in the eye of the beholder. So it's all well and good to talk about what, what planning staff intended by the, the amendment, or even what the council intended when it, when it passed the amendment. But at the end of the day, the only message that we're really sending is what the amendment actually says. And so from, on the one hand, the actual annexation policy of annexing in property in the OSPR zone, from a legal perspective, sends only the message that Mr. Mills just spoke about, which is that if you want your property to be annexed in and you want it to be zoned something other than OSPR, you will have to do something to make that happen. You will have to ask for it to be zoned something else. That's the only legal message, I suppose you could say, that the actual annexation sends. Now, the one thing that addresses maybe Mr. Harding's question is that the amendment to the general plan in front of you includes in both the amendments to area five and area six, the sentence, "Any future development project requiring a rezone from the OSPR zone would be required to demonstrate a substantial benefit to the city and would be subject to the requirements of the critical hillside overlay zone." That, that is a message that is included in the amendment. So you are, to Mr. Harding's point, I guess, on the one hand, you're being asked to both amend the annexation policy to, to change the default from agricultural to OSPR in areas of five and six. You're also being asked to approve that sentence that says explicitly, anyone who's applying for something else will be required to, to demonstrate substantial benefit. So if, if that, if that sent, and those are kind of two different things, in the sense, you could do the one without including the language, right? You could, you could amend the annexation policy to say it will be annexed in as OSPR without having that sentence in it. Or you can include that sentence, and that is where you are either sending a message or not sending a message.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Very helpful. Mr. Harding, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I, I do appreciate that very much. There's a lot of red word, you know, strikeouts and a lot of added. And, and I had a hard time reading the, the map. So that was actually very helpful to kind of understand what is actually in this proposal. And, you know, I'm, I'm also okay with, you know, this requirement to, to demonstrate substantial benefit. I, I'm okay with that. But so, so I'll be voting for the proposal that's before us. I do want to just kind of explain where I was coming from with that. I'm, I'm a big proponent of heavily considering the plans that are in place. And we've, we've talked about this before, our staff, you know, city staff take those plans and try to follow them and then, and bring us proposals that align with those plans. And, you know, so, so, you know, I, I think those should have a, a lot of weight. And I think they only have weight when councils really, you know, dig in and say, do we really want to hold ourselves to these standards? Do we really want our staff to work on, on bringing us proposals and directing applicants, you know, to, to follow these, these things? And if, if we just pass things as, hey, you know, it, it sounds good and, and we didn't really look into all of the details, then, then future councils may not feel much, you know, feel much weight behind those, those, these, these plans. And so, and, and policies. And so I, I just, I wanted to, to understand what we're being asked. And if we were being asked to, to make a fairly significant policy decision, that, you know, make sure that we've gone through the, the proper amount of, of public input and vetting before we, before we make that. And I'm hopeful that if we go through the process of updating the, the northeast area plan, that, you know, we will revisit this and will, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have a recommendation of policy come, come from that. Because I think that's probably the proper level of, of, of rigor before we make such a policy decision. But if, if what we're saying here is the default is open space and, you know, rezones are allowed when, when the applicant can demonstrate that, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with going forward with that tonight.
All right. Any, any other discussion this item? This is the first time it's been heard. So if anyone desires to have this item continued, they should let us, they should speak up. If not, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. No request. I'll, with Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Voting was unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mills. We will continue then with item number eight, which is an ordinance, motion on an ordinance amending Provo city code to clarify spacing requirements for accessory structures in the residential conservation RC zone, citywide application. And this will be presented by Dustin Wright.
Okay, thank you. So item number eight, what we're looking at here is to, there we go. I don't know if we have a slide to just show, but basically it's a simple text amendment that we'd like to, to make to help add some clarity within our code, within the RC zone. Currently, the way it's written, it appears to imply that there's a requirement for 20 feet to be between the main structure and any accessory structure. Most properties in the RC zone are going to be a lot smaller, 20 foot rear yard requirements. And so with that 20 foot back, that would make it so it's very limiting in which properties in the RC zone will actually be able to have a, an accessory structure. An accessory structure would be something like a garage or a shed. And so what we're proposing in our amendment here would just be to add some clarity by adding some language that would add six feet for distances between accessory buildings and the main building. This six feet comes in a lot of our other residential zones from separation from accessory building to a principal structure. So that's why we're looking to, to add that there. It will help clarify that. And if you have any questions for me about this proposed language, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. I need to make a clarification. I skipped item number seven inadvertently. So we'll, we'll finish this item and then we'll return to item seven in case anybody is wondering. So anyway, any questions for Mr. Wright on this item number eight? All right, seeing no questions, I will turn to the public for any public comment. All right, seeing no comment from the public, bring it back to council for discussion of this item. Any, any comments or questions or discussion? Okay, seeing no comments, does any, if no council member desires to consider this item again at the next council meeting, I will call for a vote on the implied motions. If you desire to continue this item, say so. All right, so I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
All right, that voting was unanimous. Thank you. We'll return then to item number seven, which is an ordinance amending Provo city code to remove seven, which is an ordinance amending Provo City Code to remove references to Community Development Director. This has citywide application. It's probably because this is such a controversial item that I thought I wanted to skip it. Just...
Most important of your night. So, council members, this is just in reference to updating our code to remove Community Development Director references and replace those with either Community and Neighborhood Services Director or Development Services Director as appropriate. So, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Mills? Call for comment from the public. Call in on this item. The strong public feelings on this item. Give it a second. All right, we'll bring it back to council. Does any council member desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? If not, I will call for a vote on the implied motion. And I will begin that vote, and I will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Decision, but yes.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Voting is unanimous. Thank you. All right. So, I apologize. I seem to be having some difficulty managing my agenda this evening, but we're on to item number nine, which is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 0.34 acres of real property, generally located at 590 West, 300 South from Residential Conservation RC, very low-density residential VLDR in the Franklin neighborhood. And this will also be presented by Dustin Wright.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. So, applicant's property here on 300 South is what's being proposed to be rezoned. The general plan for this area is residential, and so, the proposed request will fit within the general plan designation as it currently stands. The zoning map, we see that it's currently in the Residential Conservation RC zone, and the request that they're making is for the very low-density residential zone to be applied here. The reason for their request is to be able to subdivide this property. And what they're looking to do there is, there's currently existing home, and attached to it, there's a shop, and then adjacent to that, kind of like a parking area for that. What they're looking to do would be to split the lot in half, keep the existing home on the corner lot, and then on that interior lot to be able to develop a duplex there. And so, the planning commission and staff have recommended approval for the rezon. And we've reviewed the plat that they've proposed, and that will fit within the requirements of the VLDR zone yard requirements and setbacks. So, that's essentially what the applicant is requesting on this item. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Harding?
So, the VLDR would be applied to both lots, not just Lot 1? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It would be for the whole current parcel, and so that would then later be subdivided into two. If it were just for the new lot, then the, I guess, essentially, the way the RC zone is written is, anytime you're changing it, you need to go through the rezon process. So, it would be needed for both properties.
Okay. But the setback from the rear lot setback for the corner lot, that is within the VLDR standards, that it would be complying, compliant to the VLDR standards?
Yes, it would. Based on what we looked at, that would, it would fit within those standards.
Thank you.
All right. I'll call for a comment from the public. Here for people to call in. The instructions here. All right. I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. Oh, I see that the applicant is among the attendees. So, I don't know if the applicant would like to make a statement.
We don't really have anything necessarily that we need to say. If you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, you've covered it well.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Harding?
Yeah, since the applicants are available, if I could ask, when was the last time that shop was in use? Has it been vacant? Or has it been in use?
As a commercial property?
Yes.
We use it as a wood shop right now, and we use it regularly as a wood shop/welding shop.
As far as we know, it's been over 30 years since it's been used as anything other than a home shop or the use of the people living in the house.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other comments or discussion from the council on this item? All right. So, this is the first time this has been considered by the council. Does any council member desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? If not, then I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with you, Mr. Harding.
Yeah, thank you. Did we invite public comment on this?
I did.
Okay, great. I will vote yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I will vote yes. So, that voting is unanimous. Thank you. We'll continue then on with item number 10, which is an implied motion on an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 4.6 acres of real property, generally located at 54 South, 2530 West, from Agricultural A1 to Residential R18 in the Provo Bay neighborhood. This will be presented again by Dustin Wright, City Planner.
Thank you. So, here's the applicant's property, Center Street and 2530 West. Get your bearings. So, looking at the general plan for the area, the designation is residential, and that's what they're continuing to propose, to remain there, as well as the southwest future land use area map shows residential in this general area as well. And so, with that, staff has reviewed the requested zone and the proposed way that they want to subdivide it. The current zone, it's agricultural, and they're requesting the residential R18 zone, which you can see properties around this are in that zone as well. Their request would be to subdivide it into 15 single-family lots and creating two new streets that would be part of that subdivision. We've worked with them to have those local streets be able to continue so that in future developments, that those will be able to connect into the street network and help with connectivity on the regional connectivity of the area here. And so, that was something that we felt like was important, and they were willing to make those changes to have that there as well. We feel like that will help fit the current plan for the future land use map, where it's calling for residential, allowing for the future development as it changes from agricultural to residential at whatever time in the future that they'll be able to connect into that same street network that's being proposed here. The planning commission has forwarded you a positive recommendation for the rezon, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this item.
All right. I'll call for a comment from the public. I have instructions here. Give it a moment. I also note, while we're waiting a little bit here, that our applicant is also, looks like, available for comment if he desires, or if anyone would like to ask him questions. Okay. So, I don't know, Mr. Black, if you'd like to make a comment, or if there are any questions for him from the council? So, I'll bring it back to council for discussion. I don't see anyone from the neighborhood chair. So, can you refresh our memory, Dustin, of what the general perception has been and reception of this item in the neighborhood?
Yeah, I believe, so it's in the Provo Bay neighborhood. I didn't receive any comment from the Provo Bay Chair. The Fort Utah neighborhood chair did contact me and talked about, originally, like I mentioned, there was some cul-de-sacs in their original design. And we kind of worked through some of those discussions to come up with the current plan that I showed you there of the streets going through. And that seemed to be the favorable option for, through that discussion. And I can't recall if there was much other discussion that I've received about it. I don't think at the planning commission, there was public comment received.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion from the council?
Yeah, I am generally supportive of this project, but I really hope that we can evaluate general trends in housing products so that we aren't over-consolidating in one type of housing in any area, that we are allowing diverse housing types. So, hopefully, future and adjacent projects in this area will bring more diversity to the area so that folks can experience different parts of their life cycle in this part of town.
All right. Well, this is the first time this item's been heard by the council, so does any council member desire to consider this item at the next council meeting? And then I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I will vote yes. And Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Voting was unanimous. Thank you. All right. We will move on. We're now on item number 11, which is an implied motion on an ordinance amending the general plan map designation of real property located at 1555 North Canyon Road from commercial to residential in the Carterville neighborhood. And this will be presented by Mr. Aaron Ardmore.
Thank you, council, for hearing this. As we discussed earlier in study session, this, these two requests, item...
Excuse me, I wonder if I could just read both items, if that's okay?
Yeah, please.
I see that's what you're about to refer to. So, item number, we just read item number 11, correct? Item number 12 is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 1.91 acres of real property, generally located at 1555 North Canyon Road from general commercial to campus mixed use. Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Ardmore.
That's great. Thank you for doing that. So, the property is up on the screen. It's the old motel there on the corner of University Parkway and Canyon Road. As referenced in the notice language, the general plan is commercial, and the current zoning is general commercial. The applicant has moved forward with a request to change those to residential, and specifically to the campus mixed-use zone, to transition this motel to a apartment building. A little bit of history, this motel, in the past couple of years, has been kind of a busy property for police calls and some other nuisances. So, the property owners are looking for a better use for the building and to fill a need for Provo City, and they're doing that with this apartment project. The planning commission saw these floor plans in October, on October 28th, and approved the project plan pending this zone change and general plan change. So, you could see here, if the zone was to pass, this project would move forward in this way, converting the hotel rooms to studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, creating additional amenities space through the site. There is existing the pool. They would propose to enhance that with a sports court here, lobby space, and some other amenities through the property. As we go to the next floor, you can see, again, a variety of unit types. This was done specifically to address concerns that staff had previously had and planning commission had previously had with just converting a bunch of hotel rooms into studio apartments. So, the developer came back and proposed this, where walls would be torn down, units would be remodeled, and a variety of apartment sizes and spaces would be created. The last remaining thing was, if I can go back to the site plan, these trees along the parking lot. That was the other concern that staff had previously, but has been addressed now in the project plan that the planning commission saw October 28th. So, to get to the two items... So to get to the two items that are before you, the zone change and the general plan amendment, staff is confident that these amendments would be best for the city. The building has kind of reached its end as a motel. It doesn't work anymore. To reuse a building without demolition and rebuild is always favorable as far as a planning aspect, I guess you could say. The CMU zone would enable the developer to house married students at the adjacent BYU campus, as well as other different demographics. So staff is recommending approval of these, and that's all I have for you.
Mr. Ardmore? Any questions for staff before we turn it to the public? Call the public to offer any comment on this item. You can call in with the instructions here and press star nine if you desire to speak. I'll wait a moment. That the applicant is present. Comment, or you may wish to ask him any questions? Okay, no comment from the public. Are there any questions for Mr. Washburn? Or the part of Mr. Washburn to make any comments? There's still a delay there. All right, seeing no questions or comments, any any discussion in the council?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like a little more enlightenment on the parking problem. I gather that's a significant issue, either from the city or from the applicant.
Yeah, I could try to address that. So initially, the applicant back in August was proposing 96 units and 111 parking stalls. That has been reduced to 86 units and 111 parking stalls, so that's about 1.2 per unit. However, the applicant described to the planning commission, and he can kind of add to this, but he explained to the planning commission that there'd be on a parking permit with this apartment building. So each apartment would get one sticker to put on their car. So it'd be one per unit, and then the rest would be available for visitors or additional cars for the units. He says he's used this in the past, and he feels pretty confident that situation will work, but I'll let him add to that if he needs to.
He has raised his hand, so Mr. Washburn, go ahead and comment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. We can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Would like to give you just a little bit of brief history. As we've mentioned, the I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback here.
Yeah, you sound good on our end. I don't know what...
Mr. Washburn, if you're listening to it on any other medium besides your phone, just mute the other item.
I'm not.
All right, give it your best.
Yeah, we don't have any feedback from you. Looks like you're muted now. You'll want to, oh, there we go. Are you there? Mr. Washburn?
Yes.
We can hear you now.
I can hear me, and I can hear myself again on about a two-second delay.
Oh, that's frustrating. We don't hear the echo, so if you can somehow tolerate it, I don't know what the cause of that is.
He probably needs to mute his computer.
Yeah, we mentioned that.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, it's a little muffled. Try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
I will try and do this and try and ignore the feedback. I'm sorry. Not the worst of the building at the time that all the disorderly behavior was taking place. Part of the property really done everything they could to eliminate the as far as the parking goes, what we are trying to do is we're trying to model the area that is extremely walkable and has good transportation. There's a area center is less than a three-minute walk, business school about a six-minute walk, and then UTEA Express is adjacent to the property with the shuttle restaurants to the mall, BYU campus, UVU, downtown Provo, and other The approach is about at least typically students that are either ready to take on internships or looking for different work. Really struggling with trying to find places to live that don't require a year to two-year commitment. Because of that, we feel comfortable with the parking requirement. There is no ability Everything will be done by a permit, and if you don't, if you Is there any other questions I could answer?
Let me ask the city staff. Do I understand correctly then that city staff is no longer concerned about the parking situation?
You're muted, Mr. Ardmore.
All right, that's correct, for some of the reasons that the applicant was stating. The proximity to campus, proximity to mass transit, the lack of spillover area for extra cars. We feel confident that this system will work with this number of units.
Thank you.
I want to ask a follow-up question to that, if I might. The I recall the Amanda Knight Building when it was going in, coming back online as a dorm. There were some similar questions about parking insufficiencies in the building, but because of the location, right, it seemed almost pointless to build or require more parking, not to mention the fact that there wasn't a whole lot of space for it. But I like that. I mean, I certainly don't want to encourage you know, students bringing too many cars and the like. But it seems to me that some really strong incentive program, or maybe even a penalty for an extra vehicle or something like that to, you know, discount provided to people who don't have a car. Because this really should be a unit that advertises itself as the place to be for those who don't have cars. You know, in an ideal world, I think you could get away with having even fewer parking spots, given its location, but that would only happen if there was a really aggressive campaign or even some sort of financial incentive to draw people to this and reward them for not having a car. I think the worry I have is that even with this excellent location, it's still possible that, and Mr. Washburn's phone was kind of coming in and out, so he might have said something about this, and I couldn't hear, but if this is for married couples, you can't assume that they won't have two cars, and if they have a second car, then they may, you know, find creative ways to park it someplace else, I guess, and I guess the I guess I'm just expressing some anxieties about parking that would be assuaged if I knew more about sort of how enforcement would work or what kinds of incentives would be in place to really make sure we don't have some sort of spillover problem like we have elsewhere in the Carterville neighborhood already.
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I think the thing that we I understand your concern, and the way we are trying to work through that is we are all parks would require a sticker to park there. The proximity that we have to the campus, I think, would encourage people that don't have a car to see this as an excellent location to locate.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, though, if they have a second car, they know they can only park one there, but then they may find other places to park it.
Early on, particularly when we were meeting with the neighborhood, we looked at those issues. The closest residential neighborhood to this property is actually behind the stadium, and the the commercial developments around are very aggressive about enforcing parking. I think the best thing I can tell you is if someone approaches us that has two cars, they will not be allowed
That's great. Mr. Harding, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to express thanks to the applicant for working with our city staff on this project. I'm actually kind of excited about this one and the change to this property. I really like the variety of units, that they're not all just the single studio apartments anymore. I really think that, you know, it may have been kind of a painful process, but I think the point where we're at now is a better project. And so I'm looking forward to voting for this.
Thank you. Other comments from the council? These two items are both heard now for the first time by the council, so if there is any council member who desires to hear one or both of these at a later council meeting, now or forever hold your peace. All right, seeing no further comment from the council or request for a continuance, then we will call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll start with item number 11, which is the amendment of the general map, general plan map designation. And I'll begin with Mr. Fillmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Let's turn that eyesore into some eye candy. Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I will vote yes, Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
All right, that voting is unanimous. I will then turn to the vote on item number 12, which is the amendment of the zone map classification. And I will begin with Mr. Hoben.
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I will vote yes, Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
All right, that is also unanimous. So we have two unanimous votes. And that, my friends, brings us to the end of our agenda because items 13, 14, and 15 have been continued. So that brings us to the moment of the adjournment. So if there is no objection, we will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council meeting by unanimous consent and thank all of you for participating and being a part of this very much.